July 12th, I would like to open the zoning board of appeals meeting for this evening. Like to announce that this meeting is being televised live in local cable channel 18. If we would, if we could all rise and say pledge allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next, I'd like to say, does anyone have a public comment regarding anything not related to any agenda items tonight? If so, please check in with Mary Ann to my left, and you can have three minutes to make your comments. Hopefully, everybody understands that. Any issues, comments you may have in reference to items not on the agenda. I would like to ask for public comments of each hearing to be at the end of the presentation. What I will do is really have a certain process, but anybody who wants to speak other than the applicant, that will be asked at the end of each presentation. Next, people sitting tonight will be the three permanent members, and the first here would be Sharon and Charlie. Okay? Sounds good. So Sharon, would you like to read the first application, please?
Twenty-three Pembroke Drive.
Sorry, excuse me.
What?
Yes.
Did you want to read in that there might be some late people?
Well, I thought because she was able to get through, but certainly, well, do we want to give a couple extra minutes right now to wait for traffic?
I don't know. I think if there's anybody that has anything to do with our first case.
Let me ask you, sir, if I could, do you, I hate to ask, but I'm going to ask anyway. Have there been anybody, a butter or anyone that has input in reference to your issue?
No, not to us directly. I don't know if anybody was planning.
Mary Ann?
No.
Nothing.
I'm here. I'm the director of water.
You are a director of water?
Yep.
Oh, great. So you were able to get through? You were able to get through the traffic?
I came the other way. I came from Boston.
Ah. Well, why don't we do this, to be on the same side? Why don't we just wait for five minutes? Okay?
That's perfect.
Okay, we'll wait for five minutes. We'll give it till, say, eight past. How's that? And then we'll start.
Set the timer.
Five minutes. Let's not talk about any applications.
I didn't mean to interrupt. I just thought.
No, no, I totally understand, Bill. This is kind of a rare situation. We want to be able to give people the right to speak.
Speak.
Just each layer of what happened.
Yeah, so what just took place, some of you in the audience know, there was an accident on Great Neck Road north. Some people can and cannot get through. Some of our board members were able to get through, but there is one lane traffic, and I don't think it would be right if somebody wanted to give input into applications and they're stuck in traffic. I don't think that would be fair, knowing what we know. So we'll give it five minutes. Four minutes from now, is it on the blue?
I got the timer.
And then we will proceed. We can't wait all night, but.
Nope. Chairman, I may have to leave at eight times.
Okay, understood. Thank you very much, George.
It's moving now.
Oh, it is? Is it both ways?
Well, they're stopping one side, and it was a head-on collision.
Wow. Well, I figure that one way, we'll give it probably another three minutes.
Yep.
And then we'll move it on.
Okay. No, we got, we got to have.
I didn't mean to insert myself on.
I totally wish you did. I'm not.
I'm glad.
I'm very glad you did. I'm not that type of person.
It's weak.
Speak up when you think you need to speak.
Thank you.
As everybody in this board should.
I don't know. I'm getting like used to these new seating arrangements.
No, I'm not.
Little answer.
They were fantastic. Well, I moved out the corner.
He just listened to Brad.
But Brad would have had to have come through.
Did Brad say he was coming, Mary Ann? He did.
So he might be sitting in traffic.
He's stuck in traffic.
He's stuck in traffic.
See, that's right there. That's not good.
Okay, here's Alex from.
And Alex is probably stuck.
Alex, were you sitting in traffic because of the accident?
Yeah, I was out there.
Is it backed up very far?
Pretty far, maybe like Southside Rotary District.
Is it back to the Rotary?
He came from this.
He came the other way.
Oh, he came from the other way.
So it's one-way traffic right now?
Yep.
I mean, it looks, a lot of cars are coming that way too, but.
Yep, both ways. They're stopping one side, letting some feet, and they're stopping the other side.
Yep.
And it's back up.
Well, we'll wait. As soon as the five minutes, we'll move forward.
At two forty-nine.
We've got another three, almost three minutes.
Maybe we can ask the bill inspector, the zoning enforcement officer, how his vacation was. No?
It was good, though.
I'm glad to hear it. You needed it. It's good, huh? Great to get away for a couple of days.
Who's on the first one?
The first one's going to be three of us, and Sharon and Charlie.
All right.
Bob, how's the house?
Good.
Painted.
Painted.
Looks good.
Looks beautiful.
Looks good.
Looks like the, looks like the White House. Nice deck.
It is a way.
Nice deck up top on the chair. I like that.
I get the chair up there.
Where do you see the palm trees that are going in?
Palm trees?
Oh, yeah, I get the flamingos coming too.
Now we're talking.
No Brad yet.
You said you came from Boston, sir? Was the traffic a lot from Boston?
No, it's fine.
Really?
But he was in here before me.
That's good.
Hmm.
Take it at a bit of time.
We got one minute, ten seconds.
All right.
There, get any shot out there.
I think it's important, Mary Ann, just to let the record, that we did wait a little bit here.
They're walking out there.
Yeah. Okay.
Good to go.
Good to go. So first public hearing will be heard by the three full-time members and Sharon and Charlie. Sharon, would you read, please, twenty-three Pembroke Drive into the record?
Twenty-three Pembroke Drive. Owners, Michael J. and Jennifer L. Deacon, request a written finding under one seventy-four dash seventeen of the zoning bylaws to allow for decaditions, alterations, extensions to a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling on property located in an R3 zoning district in the Palm Pen asset overlay district, map one twenty-three, parcel fifty-five, Mashpee, Mass.
Thank you.
Can we talk? Right up. Come on up. Present, please. If you could give your name, address.
Good evening. My name is Michael Deggan. This is my wife, Jennifer. We're the owners of twenty-three Pembroke Drive, the subject property. We are here, as the reader indicated, to ask for a finding that we are able to do the minor remodel that we're planning on. I'll sort of highlight it for you. You've got the drawings, but the, I'll note sort of for the record that both the front setback, side setback are well within the town limits. The rear setback is not changing. It's already pre-existing non-conforming. It's six point seven, six feet, seven inches now. It's going to be six feet, seven inches after the change. Effectively, what we're doing, or we would like to do, is to, if you're looking from the front or into the front of the house, there's an existing deck that wraps around the right side of the house. We're, we'd like to extend the existing width of that by six feet so that we can put a garage underneath. And that would be the depth of the existing deck that we have now. So that deck runs roughly twenty-four feet deep in terms of length, so we'd be adding six feet to that, or on an internal dimension, five foot, seven inches. And putting a garage underneath that has an entryway into the existing basement. The only thing that we're doing with respect to going outside of the existing four walls is to, there is an existing back porch, back deck that allows the exit out of the back of the house now. We're essentially just enclosing that to make it a mudroom instead of just a, you know, a deck with stairs, so that it's a mudroom with stairs instead. And then finally, the front of the house where the deck is now, you'll see there are stairs going out sort of from the main entrance of the house down into sort of a landing. Right now, the deck from, as you're walking up the stairs, sort of has an angle in. What we're doing is sort of bringing that angle out so that the rest of the railing is flush with the existing railing, to just gain a little more square footage there. Again, that doesn't impact any of the front setback issues. We've been through conservation last fall and have a plan to do what they asked us to do with respect to substitute planting of native species to accommodate the change from the digging and the removal of some shrubs that are existing right now in the sort of six-foot space that we're going to be, that we'd like to add to the deck. So the, I guess importantly, from the standard of the zoning bylaws of not being substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood or the area, our lot coverage is still well below what the regulation is as the proposed addition to the deck and the other minor addition with the mudroom. We go from twenty point nine coverage to twenty-two point nine percent coverage where the standard is twenty-five percent. I think that's it. Happy to answer. Any questions that anybody has?
I have a couple. The enclosed patio for your entrance off the rear of the deck, you're showing it at six point seven feet, correct?
The rear setback will remain six point seven.
I mean, I'm talking about the front setback. I'm sorry. The, yeah, the rear, the rear of your home at six point seven, where is that six? You're saying you're not increasing your nonconformity. What exists today at six point seven?
There's a porch. So there's a.
Enclosed porch?
No, it's just a deck.
Okay. But you're enclosing that, right?
Yeah.
So the question I have, the first question I have, the zoning enforcement officer, when he takes an entrance and then encloses the entrance, is this then considered setback? Where it wouldn't have been because it wasn't enclosed before.
Yeah, but it's a structure.
It's still a structure. There's something there already that defines what the setback of the house is. We're not changing the setback, nonconformity.
So the six point seven is to what specifically, to that?
To the lot, to the, to the deck.
To the deck?
To the rear. So you walk out our back door, and there's a small deck with a small stair down into the.
So my point is, that deck is then used for access, which is not part of setback. Am I right there?
Well, there's nothing else there that compromises that setback.
Doesn't change anything.
Not necessarily.
It doesn't change anything.
Well, I guess a better question. Are you okay with it being a deck going to an enclosed deck, setback at six, seven, not creating a new nonconformity?
I believe that it is not creating a new.
Fine. That's the, that's what I was getting, because there's no enclosure now that is going to. Fine. Second issue we have to deal with is a lot coverage on the remanding issue. So it would seem to me, under the notes here, there are areas of the lot that are in coastal bank, areas that are in fifty-foot flood zone, there are areas within flood zone period. So that's going to change, correct me if I'm wrong, David, that's going to change lot coverage calculations.
Well, all of that's been addressed by the conservation commission last fall.
No, we have to address.
Okay. So I'm not sure that that's.
Quick history, we were remanded by a judge to, to consider something, lot coverage in a different way, which is in compliance with our zoning bylaw. That being said, the percentages are going to be different than what are depicted on this plan. I'm somewhat amazed that Cape and Islands didn't depict it that way, if you know what I'm saying.
Yeah, it could be a hundred percent to a hundred percent.
Or, no, no, it could be seventy percent to eighty percent. It's something different than what's depicted in the, in the plan, and I'm trying to understand if we need to change it.
Understood. Under the old rules, he's still under the.
Right. The new rules, he's not depicted, right? That's what concerned me.
So the real question here is, what percent of that lot is in land subject to coastal storm flowage? That's what we're trying to get at.
And if you look at all these things right here, there's several criteria that would exempt, that would not be included in lot coverage.
It appears to be none, no.
See, I think part of the problem was that this plan was drawn up August twenty-ninth of two thousand and twenty-two. And that was before the judge gave the opinion loss.
So, but David, if you look at existing development within fifty to a hundred feet of Buffalo Zone, that's okay. But existing dismembered structures, that's okay. Proposed development within fifty, that's okay. Proposes increased development within fifty feet. I think some of that, if you look at the plan, some of it's going to be within the flood zone, some of the lot, the bottom area.
Do you have the, I'm sorry, do you have the conservation commission?
Yeah, no, this is, this is a different.
So if you look at that, I mean, the line, there's a green line that shows the hundred-foot buffer, and the existing deck, the front part of our deck that's there now, is with, is sort of just beyond the hundred-foot buffer.
No, we can see that, sir. Here's the, here's the problem.
Something different.
It's totally different. This is not a conservation issue.
Okay.
If any of your lot is in flood plain or wetland jurisdiction, any of it, square inch, okay, then your computations in your box on the right-hand side would change. okay, then your computations in your box on the right-hand side would change. That's the way I'm, it has nothing to do with conservation, has to do with the way we have to figure it now.
Okay. Does that change the determination about whether the request is making it significantly detrimental to the neighborhood or not?
Nothing to do.
Nothing to do with it.
Apples are orange.
Yeah, apples. And by the way, we would have, we would have asked you for your coverage anyway, but what we've called it, it would have been called building coverage, not lot coverage. It's something we could get in and spend the next hour on. I think there's a way maybe we can manage this. George, hi, Charlie, correct me if I'm wrong.
Yep.
If this plan goes back that long, I think in this scenario, that we could make their ask condition upon this plan being updated, okay?
I agree.
And move forward with this application tonight, because of the age of this plan.
I think you're right, and I think Cape and Islands is aware of the situation and aware of what's required by us in terms of the information on the plan, because they have done it before.
Okay.
So, Cape and Islands is aware of what we need.
All right. So, why don't we do this? What I'd like to do is, why don't we go around the, what I like to do is board questions, then we'll read some letters, we'll go to the audience, and we'll revisit. Seems to me there might be a way to manage through this subject to input from boards, committees, audience, et cetera, et cetera. Anybody else in the board have any questions?
Yeah. I think that if you went back to Cape and Islands and told them to update the plan to show that it's going from 100% to 100%, which it's, it may be, or maybe it's 80%.
They know what they do.
Okay.
They'll know what they're doing.
So, it's a wetlands coverage calculation?
Yeah, we'll explain, yeah, we'll explain.
They'll know, but it's, it's land subject to coastal storm flowage.
I'm sorry. Wait, excuse me.
I see what you're saying. So, David's saying he may be correct, he may be, I, I see what you're saying. It's, he's in within, he's within setbacks of wetlands, but he may not be in any wetlands. So, if that's the case, maybe he doesn't have that.
But he's in the FEMA zone.
Upon that, even if he is, he is. If he isn't, he isn't. See what I'm saying?
Condition it on that.
It's very simple. So, I think we can deal with it, but I understand what you're saying, David. It makes sense.
I don't think there's any change in lot coverage.
You're, the engineer might say, no change. Perfect.
There is no change, but the plans don't depict, potentially don't depict what it really is.
Correct, potentially. They, but they may not have to be changed. If in fact, there isn't any of that located in the lot, it would be fine.
Agreed, agreed.
Anybody else on this? Yes, Sharon?
I want, would like the screen porch conditioned, that it won't be winterized.
It's a mudroom. It's not a screen porch. I'm not sure which you're pointing to.
She's talking about the, the back. No, it's not going to be winterized.
And the front one?
The front screen porch is going to be a screen porch. That's what it's going to be. It is not going to, it's not at all going to be.
Yeah, I'm looking at the screen porch, that if it was winterized, it would become a bedroom.
Oh, no.
No, it's going to be, it's a...
So, you're saying both front and rear porches are going to be screened?
No.
So, the front will be screened?
The back room, the back porch that's there now, is going to be walled and roofed to become a mudroom.
Which would be heated?
No. It's not going to be heated. It's going to be an entry that is now covered instead of not covered as it is now.
You got that, Charlie?
Based on the dimensions.
We are not heating that room.
It's less than 70 square feet.
Yeah, I'm talking about the one on the front.
The screen porch on the front, to the left of the front door, is going to be just that, a screen porch that will be seasonal. We have no intention of heating that. We are just trying to create a situation that we can be out there and not be bitten by mosquitoes.
Okay. David?
The garage, now what you mean by the garage, it's not a carport, it's a full garage? It's a full garage, flat, with a flat roof and a deck over it?
Yes.
The deck is already existing?
Part of the deck is existing now. We're extending the deck by 6 feet to be able to accommodate the width of a car and put the garage in.
Okay. So, what are you going to put, like, pre-cast concrete on top or some, what's going to be on, on top of that? It's going to be a roof structure on top of that garage?
Yeah, I mean, it's going, a rubber roof.
Like a flat, yeah, yeah, I get that. Yeah, I got it. Anyone else on the board? Okay, so, what I'd like to do is letters from agencies, then we'll go out to butters. Can we read in letters from, whether it be...
Yep.
Whatever, we'll go out to the audience.
Water Health, 23 Pembroke, to remain five bedrooms, no comment. Conservation, 23 Pembroke, this project was issued a negative termination approval by Conservation Commission in October 22. I have an email dated Wednesday, July 12th, from Dan Kent, 22 Pembroke Drive, IDA permit for deck addition and modifications to existing dwelling approved by Conservation Commission. And I think that's it. That's it.
That's it.
Do we have any letters from any of butters?
No.
Okay. All right. So, having said that, Mr. Morris, do you have anything else?
I'm good.
Okay, audience. Audience participation, audience input. Anybody in the audience have anything to say about this application? Yes, sir?
You need the mic.
Yes, you have to come up and just give your name, address, et cetera, please.
Yep, Christopher Lake, 36 Ancatina, which I think, trying to understand the picture and everything, when, when you say the back, that's Ancatina?
No. So, the, the house...
You need to be on mic as well.
Sorry.
The front is Pembroke, right?
No, the side is Pembroke. So, if you look here, this is Pembroke. So, we, if, we're on, our front of our house is on Ancatina. We just have a Pembroke Drive.
Okay, so the garage is on...
The garage is going to be here. So, as you look at the house, we're sort of, the driveway comes up here. We're going to extend the driveway in here, and the garage is going to be under the deck on the right side.
Okay.
So, we're just taking out the rotaed entrances that are there.
Yep.
We're taking those out, which go out more than 6 feet now, and using 6 feet of the existing deck width and the full length of it to put a garage in.
Okay, so this, I'm just pointing to the wall, which I think is the house part, where it says proposed roof of entry.
On the street, on the right-hand side?
Ancatina.
From the street, Ancatina.
From the street, it's Ancatina facing forward.
The 24-foot long wall, is that what you're pointing at, sir?
Um, yes, I believe so. And then it says 12 feet, I believe, from the, the structure of the house out, right? That's the deck. That's a deck today. That's a deck today, I believe?
Yes.
And that's going to turn into a walled structure?
No. The, this edge, so the, as, so Chris's house is, as you're facing from Ancatina to our house, his is directly to the left.
Got it.
For orientation purposes. So, the, as we're facing from Ancatina to the front of the house, the far-left portion of the existing deck right now is going to become, this little box, is going to become a screen porch.
Okay.
So, it'll have a very low wall, shingled wall, and then the rest will all be screens.
Okay. How far does that stick out today, from the house to, what are the dimensions of that deck?
It's exact...
It doesn't change at all? Okay.
The only thing we're changing with the deck is to the other side, and these little triangles here, that are white here, are coming out so that the, everything is running across.
Gotcha, I understand. So, this part, I'm, folks, we're just pointing to that box that's 12 by 16 on the left side of the structure.
Mm-hmm.
That's the part I was curious about. So, I suspect if that, it can, if it goes up, it's going to have two, two stories, right?
Yeah, there's going to be...
A porch on top of us.
There's going to be a deck above the screen porch.
Why don't you, you should probably voice your questions to us.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm just kind of curious in terms of, excuse me, I'm sorry. I'm just kind of curious in terms of, like, going up, doesn't impede me at all? I think leaving it where it is doesn't impede me at all, but moving it out either closer to the Ancatina Road would. So, if the deck itself that stands today...
It appears nothing is going closer to Ancatina.
Okay, I mean, that's all...
Are we, are we correct in that statement, sir?
That is correct. The only thing that, the only thing that's coming closer to Ancatina is, right now, is if you look at the front of the house and the center staircase that goes towards the front door, there are two little triangles that are now not going to be triangles. We're going to come, come out so that they're flush with the existing fascia of the existing deck.
Got it. But you're already out to that distance anyway.
Exactly.
So, all right, so, so nothing is getting closer to the road.
There's nothing, there's nothing is coming forward of the existing deck at all, period.
You're not going closer to the street.
Exactly.
That's the bottom line.
And are you creating any new nonconformities? Any new?
No.
Okay. Sir, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, I, the structure itself in terms of dimensions, I believe all that's been there for years, I believe must have been properly permitted and all. But as long as that is true, and then if the structure doesn't come closer to this Ancatina itself...
If this board votes to approve this, this, this application, these plans are going to be part of the record. So, it will not, unless he makes a mistake and has to take it down.
Yep, so going, going...
That's not the intention.
Going out, whatever, you know, rebuilding what's there is fine. Even going up doesn't bother me at all.
If, if, let me see if I got this right. If I'm on Ancatina, I'm facing your front.
Exactly.
Your house, sir, is to the left.
First one to the left, yep.
Right here. He's not going any closer to you as far as I can see.
More closer to Ancatina.
The only change is from the same spot on the right, about 6 feet closer to Pembroke.
Correct.
Which is still within the 15-foot allowed set.
Yep.
Correct.
No, I'm, I was just curious, sir. You know what I mean? I draw it out for a reason.
Yeah, no, I'm sensitive. He has a, so, Chris's, I'm sorry to talk to you. Chris's patio is in the back of his house, so obviously if I were him, I'd be concerned about sightline, right? The sightline's not going to change.
So, are we correct to assume at this point you're all set with this application?
Yeah, as long as it's what you guys described and what's been described.
Just, just for clarity for you, so the, the screen porch part is going to be over here, and then we're rejiggering what's in the, in the house.
You guys do whatever inside, Mike.
Gentlemen, we're all set, we're all set, we're all set.
There's going to be, there's going to be a deck above the screen porch, but again, that doesn't change the dimensions.
No, I mean, I know that it may not be the complete purview of the board here, but part of my house has wind, water view, right? Such that it is.
Unfortunately, well, we don't need to do that.
I'm just trying to understand the impact, that's all.
So, I thank you very much for your input, sir.
Okay.
And anyone else in the audience have any questions, issues or concerns with this application? Please raise your hand. Okay, seeing none. I'm going to go back to the board. Do we have everything that we need in reference to this?
We, we don't need an updated plan from Cape and Islands, do we?
Well, I would say this, if there are, Cape and Islands knows the criteria we're dealing with on lot coverage now. If it needs to be altered, it should be submitted to this board, and it would be part of the record. If it, if it's all set the way it is, we don't need any of it, but they should review.
Now, the real question is, is any of this lot in land subject to coastal flowage?
If it is, then you do.
Well, you also, but you also have to consider wetlands, the whole thing, right? So, and they should know that. I mean, they know how to calculate it.
Of course they do.
So, at this point, you know...
So, how does Charlie condition?
Well, I think it would be conditioned upon further review of Cape and Islands under the existing lot coverage guidelines that they're clearly aware of, and if this plan needs to be updated to reflect said conditions, it shall be, that shall be done. If it does not need to be updated, then that's fine. But he should notify Cape and Islands, one way or the other, our secretary, Mary Ann, whether it does or does not. And if it does, he needs to do it.
All right, if I do it this...
Exactly. We need to know one way or the other.
Let me just see, so it would be conditioned on further review by Cape and Islands to reflect whether the present plan is in conformity with current criteria?
Correct. And if it is not in conformity, meaning the, the, the plan is depicted, it needs to be done so before an application for a building permit.
Okay.
Correct me if I'm wrong, board. We don't need to see it because it doesn't matter to us per se, as long as the plan is correct.
I don't think, I mean...
We want to make sure we get the feedback before it moves forward.
Right, right. So, yeah, so he's going to...
So, we have to hear from Cape and Islands.
Right.
It's one way or the other. Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right. And, and, and it could be as simple as the plan is correct, our zoning enforcement officer, and I tend to agree that the plan is probably correct the way it is.
I think so.
Nothing will need to be done, you're all set.
So, should they have noted that, if they didn't, somewhere on the plan, they should have noted that you're good, or...
No, 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 they, they'll know.
They'll know what to do.
They'll know exactly. They've been in front of this board many times.
No, I'm saying, you obviously don't have what you need to...
No, we could have what we need. We're just questioning that we may not.
They need to confirm that we've got what we need.
We're proving a negative, right? That's what we're after, proving a negative.
We may, we, it may be all fine. It's just, it's a court case. We just, it'll be fine.
And so, when I talk to them tomorrow, I'm asking, the land subject to wetlands, what's the...
All you're going to say to them?
Coastal storm flowage.
Is this plan up to the recent criteria when it comes to lot coverage calculations? They will understand that very clearly.
They will.
All you're going to say to them, and if it's not, it needs to be depicted as so. And if it is, they need to, either way, they need to call Mary Ann and say it isn't, and we will fix, or it is, and we do not need to change.
Right. And if they say it isn't, and we don't need to change, we're done.
Yeah. And if it does, you need to submit the plan to Mary Ann, part of the record, and prior to the building permit. You don't have to come back to this board.
Okay. So, I just need to have Raoul call Mary Ann.
Correct.
One way or the other. And if it's, nothing needs to be done, Mary Ann gets the call. She's told. If something needs to be done, I need to get them to...
I would actually have, ask Raoul to send a letter to Mary Ann, so it's in the, in the folder.
Okay.
All right? I just, I don't want a phone call. A letter would be better. It's that simple. Plan meets as present criteria for lot coverage. Plan does not meet it, I will amend. It gets amended, and then you can file for building. Charlie, you need any other...
No, the only other thing was, what Sheriff said, conditioned on the mudroom and screen porch not being winterized.
So, that would be Sharon's...
Well, I was concerned about the screened porch because it's the size of a bedroom.
Is that a zoning issue?
Yeah. Yeah, it certainly is.
Whether you, whether you winterize a, a screen porch?
No, whether we, whether we allow the criteria that it could be, or may not be considered a bedroom or not, is a criteria for us.
Yeah, if you winterize it, it's considered a bedroom.
That would be under our jurisdiction. So, Charlie, do you understand?
Even if it's, even it's, even if it's clear of the setbacks and those sorts of things?
Um, yes. We've actually made conditions before quite commonly in this.
Yeah, you've matched it, the number of bedrooms.
They've already said five-bedroom limitation.
Yeah, no, I'm, fine. I'm just trying to understand, yeah.
Charlie, anything else?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No.
All right. So, I have a motion to close the public hearing, please.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion closed. Who would like to make a motion in reference to this application?
I've got the material here, so let me start. Okay, I'd like to make a motion relative to 23 Pembroke Drive. Owners, Michael J. and Jennifer J. Deggan, request a written finding under section 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to allow for deck additions, alterations, extensions to a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling on property located in the R3 zoning district and the Pompan asset overlay district, map 123, parcel 55, Mashpee, Mass., with the following conditions. One, the board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding under Mass. general laws 40A, section 6. Two, site plan, prepared for Michael J. and Jennifer J. Deggan, 23 Pembroke Drive, Mashpee, Mass., sheet number 1 of 1, date August 29th, 2022, drawn by JBB WNH, checked by MC, prepared by Cape and Islands Engineering, drawing title, proposed site plan revisions 21423, correction to building height and Mashpee zoning table 101422, remove proposed rents, station reconstruction, stamped and signed by Raoul Lazardi Rivera, civil number 46845, and Matthew C. Coster, number 52282, professional land surveyor. Construction documents, Deggan residence 23 Pembroke Drive, Mashpee, Mass., date 2823, drawn by JLB, D1 demolition plans, sheet number 1, first floor plan and left side elevation, sheet 2, second floor plan and elevation, sheet 3, foundation plan and rear elevation and eve detail, sheet 4, first floor framing plan, building section, roof deck detail, sheet 5, second floor framing plan, building section, hood detail, sheet 6, roof framing and building section, sheet 7, window and door schedule, sheet 8, specifications prepared by Archuplicity LLC, stamped and signed by Dominic W. D'Angelo, structural registered engineer, number 35062, date 4123. Number 4, conditioned on all town department comments read into the record, including but not limited... not limited to the Board of Health comments. Number five, conditioned on the screen porch and mudroom not being winterized. Condition number six, conditioned on further review by Cape and Islands Engineering to reflect whether the current plan is in conformity relative to lot coverage with the present law as understood by the Zoning Board of Appeals and Cape and Islands Engineering. If not, notification and a new plan currently dated will be prepared and forwarded to Mary Ann and to the Zoning Board of Appeals. If it is in compliance, then Cape and Islands Engineering will notify in writing the Zoning Board of Appeals by notification to its Secretary Mary Ann Romero. And lastly, conditioned on any changes to the plans will require the applicant to return to this board. I believe that's it.
Can I just, just one thing? My wife's middle initial is L. Just, I want the record to just, you said J, just.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
We had a little typo that got us delayed, so I want to make sure we're all good. Jennifer L. Deggan, Michael J. Deggan.
Okay.
So I have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. You're all set, sir?
All right, thanks very much.
Okay, so the next hearing is.
I'm sorry, that's correct.
Go sign it, yes, you do.
Sign all this stuff off. Give her all this stuff, she's got to stamp it and give it back to you.
What do you want this?
That's Peter Albuoco's street.
Okay, let me put this over here.
God bless him.
That, there's your plan. So she's, you're not going to stamp any of this?
Thank you, sir. Sharon, big work coming back to you.
Okay. Oops.
How are you?
All right, so one down.
Do you need a date on it? Or do you put the date? It's, what's the 7/12? Okay. So you gotta say it again? Whoa, today? So our.
There you go.
Kill, how many trees did we kill?
I know what happened, it looks like it's an accident or something.
Yeah, there was a head-on collision. So our next hearing is going to be 23 Jeep Place. I would be in conflict if I were to sit on this, so I certainly am not going to sit on this. So I turn the reins over to Jonathan.
Great, Jonathan.
I think we'll get through it.
There you go.
All right, Sharon, would you read the next new hearing, please? Oh, by the way, Charlie, Bob, and George are going to sit on this, along with Bill and I.
23 Jeep Place, owner Hans E. and Sarah J. Brings, request a modification to existing special permit, SP 2021-29 and SP 2022-49, under 174-25C9A of the zoning bylaws to eliminate condition line item 5 and allow the upstairs room to be finished and heated on property located in an R3 zoning district in Papa Nessa overlay district, map 118 parcel 11, 111, Mashpee, Mass. 111.
Did you and Ronzo?
I'm not on it.
Oh, you're not?
No.
You're on.
So you and I.
Oh, okay. I didn't know you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Members of the Board, Attorney Christopher Corain representing Hans and Sarah Brings. Hans Brings is with me here tonight. This is a project that this board has seen a couple of times, originally back in 2021 when the, the Brings received a special permit to construct a garage. We subsequently came before this board to make some modifications to the first floor of this garage, including adding a heat mini-split type unit, eliminating a door, and then doing some deck renovations. The original special permit had a condition that the proposed room above the garage remain unheated. Somehow, the modification added a condition that said to remain unheated and unfinished, which I'm not, I don't know how that came about. So Mr. Brings had finished the upstairs because he was, you know, other than the previous permit, he was allowed, the first permit, he was allowed to. So he just used it as storage, he keeps his fishing gear up there, keeps other materials up there, his son uses it, you know, for storage and as a workroom for his, I think he's in marine biology. So that's, that's all that's being used upstairs. So like we did for the downstairs, we're also looking for him to be able to put the, like a mini-split or something upstairs as well. So pretty straightforward, we'd be looking for that condition of the stores inside the garage to remain unheated and unfinished to be removed. I would also suggest, that's condition 5 in the modification, that as a housekeeping matter, you know, we'd also have the board eliminate seven, condition 7 from the original special permit. So, and I think, I think the building commissioner's been up there and seen it, so, you know, I don't know if he has any issues with what's going on up there, but.
No, I don't have any.
Where is it on you?
I've been, I inspected the whole, I signed off on it. I think the Board of Health's comment says it all.
Right.
So I don't have any issues with this.
Push storage can have to use for human habitation. Plumbing can be added. To remain four bedroom.
Right. So there's no plumbing being proposed, this is just simply storage, finished in storage.
Okay, well, why was number 7 added? Why was it there in the first place?
Because back in the day, there was a, the previous building commissioner took the position that you could not have finished upstairs. And I think it was because of the apart, there was no bylaw for this board about accessory apartments. And now, you know, there is one.
It's two, so you don't max out or go over the number of bedrooms, correct?
Right, basically.
Are you maxed at bedrooms now?
Yes.
Yeah, we have four bedrooms.
Okay, then you have no need to heat this.
Actually, my son has his marine biology items, including his snake that he brought back from school, which is not allowed to come into our house. But mine is, it's a, it's a, originally it was a finished room anyway, so it was never mentioned.
It wasn't, yeah, but it wasn't supposed to be finished.
Well, under the original special permit, there was no, there was no prohibition against unfinishing, and I don't know how that ended up getting in the modification.
The room was finished prior to the, what's it called, adjustment?
Right, the modification.
So it was finished even though it wasn't permitted to be finished?
No, 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 that's not true. Under the original special permit that was granted, all it said was the garage, the proposed room over the garage must remain unheated. That was in 2021. Nothing about it being unfinished. Okay, so it was finished before that. The modification that was granted by this board, for whatever reason, added this, that language about being it unfinished. And I, I don't know how, why or it got in there. I think it, you know, I think it was probably just typographical.
Yeah, what's the date of the modification?
It was 2022. Yes. So the original finding from this board was 2021. Paragraph, condition 7 said the proposed room over the garage must remain unheated. Didn't talk about anything about it being unfinished. And then, as I say, in 2022, when we got the modification, it had condition 5, which added language about it being unfinished, and I don't, I don't know why.
Yeah.
So.
But if you wanted to make.
But as I said, they, they.
You can.
They did it up based on, you know, the original special permit, which had no prohibition about it being unfinished. So, and again, this board allowed the mini-splits in the garage. I don't see this as, you know, being overly, you know, you know, overly burdensome request.
I'm concerned that this is going to turn into a bedroom.
Yeah, that was my only question too.
I'm very concerned. And that's why it was put in there. He's already maxed out on bedrooms.
I mean, the board can certainly condition it that it's not a bedroom. I mean, as I said, this is what it looks like today.
Wait a minute, I was born at night, but last night.
Can I make a comment?
I know what happens out there.
Can I make a comment?
Go right ahead.
Okay. So that room is not connected to the house whatsoever. There's stairs going up, if you want to use the restroom, you can't, there's just no way it could be used as a bedroom. I'm happy to put anything in here saying that it cannot be used as a fourth bedroom or whatever it is, as I said, it's a workshop, it's a storeroom.
You already have four, right?
We have four bedrooms currently, absolutely. I have zero desire to have any more bedrooms, we don't even use the other two because I have myself, my son, my son and my wife, so. You welcome the pop over anytime.
How do I know in six months that won't have a bed in it?
It just won't. Well, then I won't have a place to store all my things, which is why I came here originally. And if you look at that photo, there's just, there's just no way.
Chris, could I see that photo?
I'm hoping in, but why don't we make a six-foot opening in one of the other bedrooms? Says he doesn't need the extra bedroom.
Well, this isn't going to be a bedroom. I mean, I, I don't.
Has he got a six-foot opening?
It's just an open space upstairs.
Yeah.
It's just, there's a stairwell. So there's no openings, not connected to anything.
Is there a door?
It's not open to the house. You have to go for me outside.
The separate entrance goes to a landing to set a stairs.
Right.
He did a lot of, you know, he, he had to do a lot of mitigation, there was a deck that he had to turn into.
And it's been him three or four times.
You know, a lot of things that went, yeah, it's been around. I don't know how that all came about. Again, I think the Board of Health's comment says it all, and I don't have any issues with it being heated.
Well, if David has no issues, then I'm a little bit more comfortable.
And if one of the conditions is what the Board of Health has, you know, I don't know how we enforce that, but that, that's.
I mean, you, you don't, you enforce it as you would any other house that would, has an opening that somebody closes, but.
You enforce it the way you enforce everything that the Board of Health tells you we can do.
Right, but that should be one of the conditions.
Yeah, it should be.
Yeah, that's.
Well, a number of bedrooms are based on what?
The condition would read as.
Yeah, the size of your system.
Septic.
Yeah.
And lot size.
Correct, right.
And there, how close are you to the ocean?
Very close.
I don't know. House?
Yeah.
We're not there. I mean, another, there's a house between us and the water.
Oh, so you have one house back from the ocean?
Correct, yep.
And that's all lowlands, so we know that whole area is below sea level.
I'm actually not in the flood zone there, believe it or not, oddly enough, not sure how. But Jeep Place is one of the only streets that has very limited floodplain issues over at the property.
I mean, as I say.
And I also had to, as part of this, I think it's on the Board of Health, we had to move our septic a bit to get the original permit, which we did, and the Board of Health has a certificate of compliance for that as well.
As I say, I think the picture speaks a thousand words as far as what's going on up there, so.
I know what's there now.
I mean, that's no different than any other project I guess you would, you would permit. That says it's going to be four bedrooms. So. As I said, this board is.
What's the reason to heat it?
So my son right now works there all year long, like workshop, he fixes people's fishing rods, he has, he, he's a marine biologist at University of Rhode Island. Unfortunately, he has brought home his little corn snake because other parents weren't allowing him to bring it home, so now I have a little bit of a, you know.
So it's been unheated for a while now?
Well, we just had it built last fall. The, the construction started actually last summer. So the, it was interesting, as Chris had said, the, the property was actually finished and was allowed to be finished, and then, I don't know, you know, this came in, this adjustment came in after the property was already up, as David knows.
So it's a condition, there's a mini-split up there?
There's that, there's a mini-split that was approved by this board on the first floor.
For the first floor of the garage.
So, so you just want to add heat?
Yeah, just put it up on the second floor, that's all.
That's it.
Based on David's comments and based on the Board of Health comments, if we condition it on the Board of Health comments and David's comments, I don't, I, for one member, don't have an issue.
Okay, what do we, any other comments?
Maybe put in a motion that it's not to be used for a bed.
It's already in there.
It's already in there.
Okay.
It is.
I'm finding it.
What do we have to write in? Anything, Sharon? Comments from?
Read in the Board of Health.
Oh, I have to read in the Board of Health. Board of Health, finished storage cannot be used for human habitation, sleeping, no public plumbing can be added to remain four bedrooms. Conservation property not within wetlands jurisdiction. And do I have anything else? I think that's it.
I don't think so.
No, because I, I got it twice from conservation.
Okay, anybody in the audience? Okay. Charlie, would you make a motion on this?
Yeah, why don't we close, close the comments first?
Put a motion to close.
Move the public comments.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any further comments?
No.
Would you make a motion on this?
Yeah, and what I'm going to do is I'm going to specifically mention the Board of Health as a, one of the conditions, and go on from that.
Yeah.
Make a motion relative to 23 Jeep Place, owners Hans E. and Sarah J. Brings, request a modification to existing special permits, binding 2021-29 and modification 2022-49 under 17424C9A of the zoning bylaws to eliminate condition line item 5 and allow the upstairs room to be finished and heated on property located in an R3 zoning district and the Papa Nessa overlay district, map 118 parcel 111, Mashpee, Mass. and the following, with the following conditions. Motion, the, the board to vote either in favor or to deny removal of line item 5. Condition two, let me get to the correct language, Board of Health, finished storage cannot be used for human habitation, sleeping, no plumbing can be added to remain four bedroom. And item three, conditioned on all other town department comments read into the record, including but not limited to the Board of Health comments set forth above.
One second.
Second.
George seconds. Charlie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Bob, how do you vote?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
I vote no.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Who's wrong?
He's out talking to those people.
He's out, he's out directing traffic.
He's telling them why they have to have to send it back.
Is he here?
He's talking to this guy now.
Did we lose our chairperson?
Well, he's very social.
Check the correct box.
Me?
Everybody.
The reputation.
We take construction.
No, 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 I didn't mean it directed directly at you. It was just, sometimes it happens.
He was including me in that.
Yep. That's mine.
Here you go, bud.
He's not moving.
Can you see him?
Yeah. Bob, would you do me a favor? Tell him he's up. Shit. There's two, right?
Okay. Hey, you're back. Welcome back, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Sarah.
It is. That's nice.
No, it isn't.
What? That's been brought.
Yeah, but we still have to read it in.
I mean, you could have filled it as a chair for that. Now I'm going to commit for two seconds, turn around, leave again. What do you want me to, you know, I have enough exercise during the day. All right. Here we are.
Are you ready?
Yes, I am ready.
164 Captain's Row, owners Mark L. and Robin R. Galant, request a written finding under 174-17 and 174-33 of the zoning bylaws to allow for an addition, alteration, extension to a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 96 parcel 28 Mashpee Mass. Board to accept letter from attorney requesting to continue this hearing until July 26, 2023.
Okay, sitting on this will be the three not regular members. When I say Sharon and Brad, how's that?
Okay, good.
All right.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Attorney Christopher Corain representing the applicants. I have requested a continuance of this hearing to July 26. The applicant is making changes to the plan, which is actually going to downsize what is being asked for originally. So we don't have the plans ready yet. So we're not prepared to go before the board yet. So we need revised plans and we'll submit those.
So I presume you're asking for an extension?
Yes, to July 26.
So I'd like to hear, have a motion in reference to the acceptance of the applicant's.
I have a letter.
Oh, a letter?
Yeah.
Oh, you gotta read that in.
If you could read that into the record, please?
Yep.
It's dated July 7 in regard to Mark Galant, 164 Captain's Row. Dear Chairman Bonfie, as you know, we represent the owner of the property referenced above. It is hereby requested that Wednesday, July 12, 2023, hearing to be continued to July 26, 2023, as the applicant is revising the plans as he is scaling down the project. Thank you for your attention. Very truly yours, Christopher J. Corain.
I presume we have time on the agenda on the 26th? Okay. So would I, could I get a motion in reference to the acceptance of this letter and the acceptance of the extension?
We have to close public comment?
Yeah, first.
No?
I don't take public comment on this one.
Nope.
No.
Do I make a motion, George?
No.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the extension request from Mark and Robin Galant via the attorney to continue to Ju-, July 26, 2023.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
All right. I'm going to walk back out that door seeing as I'm in conflict in reference to the next. You can be the chairman again.
We'll come get you again.
You get my point?
We'll get you.
We'll get you.
Thank you.
Nothing to say, right? Okay. All right, Sharon, would you read the next new hearing?
38 Nathan Ellis Highway, petitioner Mashpee Commons Limited Partnership, request a modification to the existing special permit, SP 8604024, to allow for repurposing the second floor of an existing mixed-use building on property located in the C1 zoning district, map 174 parcel 20 Mashpee Mass.
Okay, sitting on this will be, let's see, Bill and myself, as well as Charlie, Brad, and George. Okay. Hi.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Thomas Ferranti. I'm here on behalf of Mashpee Commons Limited Partnership. Thank you for the opportunity to come before this board tonight. Mashpee Commons seeks to make minor revisions to special permit 86-04-24 to address actual built conditions and to relocate certain square footage of building space and approved residential units. Per condition five of the 1986 special permit, we request that these changes be approved by the ZBA. The changes that we're requesting are related to building 31, which is located at 46 Market Street. Building 31 was built in 2014. It is a two-story building. The first floor is mercantile use. It actually is the home of Rory's Market. And the second floor was built as office space. The office tenant that was in there from the original construction of the building vacated the space at the beginning of 2022. And at that point in time, we started to revisit what we thought was the best use for that space. Now, recognizing that we are in a dire housing crisis, we started looking at opportunities as to whether or not we could convert this space to residential. You may notice Karen Gardner is sitting behind me. Karen is the executive director of the Community Health Center of Cape Cod. They happen to be one of our tenants already. They have a two-bedroom unit in Mashpee Commons that they use for some of their doctors, dentists, et cetera, for those folks. In having a conversation with her, we learned that they are struggling, as is everyone, to find housing for the folks that need to come through and work at the Community Health Center of Cape Cod. At that point in time, we started to really do a deep dive into the project to see if we could come up with an approach that would work for them. If you don't mind, I'm going to stand. For reference, this is the building. And again, because it's an existing building, I thought that photos would be a good representation of where it is. And then as a refresher, this is the Mashpee Commons master plan. It's the building highlighted in orange. And I know that 2014 was a long time ago, so I brought this back to refresh everyone's memory. The existing floor plan for the space, when it was the office tenant, it actually lends itself very well to a modification to residential units. There is a general waiting area. There are individual treatment rooms, some that already have plumbing in them for sinks. There are existing toilet facilities. There's a laundry room, and there's a kitchen. So we started looking at, how do we create as many beds as we can to help support the Community Health Center in their need to find places to put their folks? And the concept that we have come up with is to take the existing space and with very little modification to the actual layout, we create seven individual suites, we'll call them, that have beds. We take two of the rooms and we would convert, the two of the rooms that already have plumbing in them, and we would convert those to individual shower rooms. We would keep the existing toilet facilities at another toilet facility, keep the laundry room, keep the lounge, but make it more of a defined kitchen, and create a common area space. In talking with Karen, we came to learn that they have a very specific need for a place for a married doctor or dentist that has a child. So we took the opportunity to create one of these suites that has two bedrooms and sort of a little living area, so that if it was a family, the family could occupy that space. And in that instance, they would then have their own private shower facility with a toilet, so it was treated separately and they wouldn't be using the common area facilities. I met with the fire department to get their thoughts before we got too far down the process, and they didn't have any concerns with the proposal. Their main comments were focused on fire alarm systems and the way that it would connect to the overall system, which would be handled during the building permit process. There are specific code requirements and references that they asked me to double-check if this is approved and is allowed to move forward. We would get into the building design, the engineering, and the architecture and all of those pieces. I believe that in your packet, you may have the information that we typically provide, showing that there is sufficient wastewater capacity to handle this change. The conversion from an office tenant to a residential use in this instance adds 440 gallons. But as you can see in the spreadsheet, we have 90,000 excess, 90,000 gallons of excess capacity. So it's more than sufficient to handle this added load. And from a parking standpoint, we have, you know, we have extra spaces based on what's allowed by zoning. But interestingly enough, I know you're laughing. Interestingly enough, we had a very in-depth conversation with Karen about parking. And based on what they have found, about half of the folks that come through in this program don't have cars. They actually prefer to walk and bike as much as possible. And the Community Health Center actually has, they strive to encourage people to use bikes and to use ride sharing. So they're, on their own, they're working to limit the amount of car usage. So while there are multiple bedrooms in here, we don't believe that it will need more parking than we have available on the site. And there is an existing storage space on the ground floor, which lends itself very well to bike storage, if there was something that somebody wanted to store in there. We believe that this helps to solve a need that the Community Health Center has. We believe that it's a great way to repurpose a building. We started looking at this a little over a year ago, and it's interesting how repurposing of buildings really has come to the forefront as a way for us to start to try and put a little bit of a dent in the housing crisis that we have. And we hope that the board feels the same way and will approve this and allow us to move it forward. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Look, go ahead.
Let me start. How many beds are there going to be?
There would be eight beds.
In what, seven different places?
Correct. Yeah, the way that it's designed is, and it might be a little bit easier by, the current condition has all of these treatment rooms. And the concept that we have come up with is each one of these clusters, we combine into a bedroom suite that has a small sitting study area in case they have schoolwork that they need to do in addition to their hands-on practicum that they're doing, and their bedroom. So there are seven suites, one of which is a two-bedroom. So it would have their eight beds total.
Okay, and I assume there's, are there any bathroom facilities?
Not within, not within each room, no. There are, there are, there are common toilet facilities that are, there are two existing, and then we're adding one more. And then one of the, one of the shower rooms, we're adding a toilet into that one as well that would be utilized by the two-bedroom suite. They would have their own toilet, their own sink, their own shower, that they would have their own access to.
And I might point out the urania of wastewater treatment.
Correct. It's already connected to the plant and it would remain connected to the plant.
All right. This is looking like a dorm room to me.
It is, it is a similar concept to that.
Yeah. Are you, we stipulating that it's only community healthcare employees?
Yes.
It's workforce.
Yeah, so what, what the intention is for this is that Mashpee Commons would lease this unit to the Community Health Center of Cape Cod.
The whole top floor?
The whole top floor. And then the Community Health Center of Cape Cod would be responsible for putting their own employees and their own folks that are affiliated with the Community Health Center in the space. We would have nothing to do with the individual people that are in the bedrooms. We would be leasing to the Community Health Center. So they would be the sole tenant of Mashpee Commons.
I don't have a problem with that, with the Community Health Center of Cape Cod. I'm very familiar with their operation.
It is a unique concept.
Does this have to go to the planning board?
It's governed by the special permit that's granted by this board. The ZBA is the special permit granting authority.
I know I'm not voting on this, but I would like it stipulated that if the Community Health Center no longer wants this space, and they have to come back to us because.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I totally agree with you.
I'd condition it on that. That's a good point. That's a good point.
Okay.
Do you have a problem with that?
No.
Oh, definitely. I'm just thinking, Evan seen this?
No, I think it's a good concept, though. It is well needed.
I'm not saying that it is.
And I think Sharon's, you know, constraint, that's an excellent idea.
I don't know why planning needs to be involved in this. This has always been in front of zoning.
We've, we've never taken any Mashpee Commons buildings to the planning board simply because this board is the, is the special permit granting authority.
I'm just concerned about.
Been on this board a long time. This is the first time I've seen, as Sharon would say, dorm dorm. This never happened in 18 years.
The only thing I would say is it's not, it's not a dorm because we're not renting eight individual bedrooms to eight individual people. We are renting.
All the people in a dorm go to that college. So that's the same thing.
Well, yes, but the tenant for us is the Community Health Center of Cape Cod. The tenant for us is not the person sleeping in suite one.
I'm not saying that. I don't think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
But I'm not sure.
I'm not sure what you're saying then, because they're renting to the Community Health Center of Cape Cod.
That's why I wanted to come back if the community.
It has got to come back.
It has to come back.
It has to come back.
Because we, you know, you have a good thing, but we, you know, we know that it's work.
How long is the lease to Community Health?
We haven't, so this is the, this is the fine line that we walk here in, in making sure that we have enough to justify that there's a there there, but not so much so that if this board ultimately determined that they wouldn't allow it, that we haven't gone too far down a road. So we haven't gotten to the point yet where we've started finalizing lease durations or anything like that.
I, I as one board member.
So nobody from the planning board has seen this?
Unless it's, I mean, I don't know how the internal process works within the town, but we submit to the ZBA. I don't know if it gets filtered to other department heads and other committees, but I mean, we, we would not go to the planning board for this.
I understand that, but I'm just interested in their comments and thoughts on this. Because as I said, almost 19 years here, I've never seen a dorm come in front of this board.
And part of the reason that you've never seen it is because these buildings don't exist anywhere other than in Mashpee Commons. And this is the first time that we've ever come up with this, this notion of taking an office space and repurposing it into residential. I don't think this is, I don't think it's the last time that this board or any boards or any towns are going to hear this, simply because it's, it's a tool in the toolbox right now.
Right.
Doesn't this affect the affordable housing numbers and stuff like that?
No, I don't believe so.
Not within Mashpee Commons. Because it's, it's part, we have, we have, we have residential units that are approved as part of our special permit, and this is just one of our residential units.
Right.
The entire first floor would be devoted to clinical?
No, the first floor stays the same. The first floor stays as Rory's, Rory's Market, yes.
Does not change at all?
Nope, the first, the first floor does not change at all.
In terms of the oversight of those that are living on the second floor, who comes to have that responsibility?
If, if it's finalized between Mashpee Commons and the Community Health Center of Cape Cod, the Community Health Center would be our direct point of contact.
And so, Community Health Center would have to satisfy Mashpee Commons and whoever that they were capable of maintaining this living space?
Well, we have, as the landlord, we have responsibilities to maintain certain things within the space. So if there's an issue with plumbing or lighting, we as the landlord in our, we have 77 other apartments, and we have our own in-house staff that handles the property maintenance. If we need to hire outside contractors, we do.
See, my, I guess my issue would be that knowing that Mashpee Commons would have oversight right now, I don't want Mashpee Commons to give that oversight over to someone else, that then we have to worry about whether that entity is capable of the oversight necessary. If you follow my drift.
I do. I'm not quite sure how to answer the question because it's, it's basically what you're, if I understand correctly, what you're worried about is if Mashpee Commons no longer is the ownership entity of Mashpee Commons.
That, that's another, I guess.
Because I, I mean, otherwise there will, we wouldn't lose control over a building within Mashpee Commons unless.
That's all I wanted to make sure. As long as Mashpee Commons is Mashpee Commons and up with it, you maintain control and responsibility.
Yes.
Okay. Honestly, I'd like to see this continued and get some comments from Evan. I don't have any issues with it, other than I want to know what he's thinking.
Just with all due respect, why? I mean, what, what, what reason?
As I said twice before, almost 19 years, I've never seen a dorm come in front of this board. And that type of setup.
And yeah, there could be state zoning and stuff.
We have never dealt with this before. Never. I think it's a great idea if it works. I really do. I don't have anything against it. I want to know what.
So it's eight individual bedrooms?
Correct.
Not open?
Correct.
So it's not a dorm, basically. It's, it's an eight-bedroom.
No, they don't have their own bathroom?
They don't have their own bathroom? They don't have their own kitchen?
It's a dorm room.
It's a dorm room.
So if, if it's.
Living, is what it is. I agree with living is what it is.
Yeah, it's a, yeah. Totally. I believe it, it's an allowed use. I believe that it, I believe it's allowed use in, in the Commons in the special permit. And I believe that, you know, there are building codes that it fits into. They will have to pass all that stuff, but I, I don't see that this is out of, out of anything already that's allowed.
And that's what I was going to say that...
You know, if you want, if the planning, if you want the planning boards, the plant, town planners input, of course.
I'd like some feedback from him. That's all.
I think it satisfies an extreme need.
I agree with the concept. It's a positive thought.
I don't, I don't, this one member, I have no belief that we need Evan's input on this project.
We know that it'll go to Dave.
Correct.
Once you make, once you make the changes for Dave to approve the changes for living space.
What, we would have to go through the full building permit process. So your concerns, I, I'm not sure what concerns you would have that Evan would opine upon that would be different than what David would review during a normal building permit review process. It would go through the fire department, it would go through the Board of Health, it would go through the building department. Any, any building permit process goes to those, those departments. So if it's, if it's a, if it's an allowable use by the zoning and the review for the construction of it is done through the zoning administrator, I'm just not entirely sure what deferring and continuing to another board or another department head would, would add.
It's not really the board, it's the town planner. It's just entirely different.
Can we condition it on just a review by the town planner? I mean...
I would like to have a...
I could send it to the town planner for his review on the application. I could do that if, if that's...
Because like, right here...
What's wrong with that?
I'd like a comment, just like I have from Board of Health and Conservation.
Go ahead. Please.
Okay. Board of Health has commented on this. The facility is on private sewer treatment. Board of Health has no comments. All right? Conservation, 38 Nathan Ellis Highway, no concern from Conservation because you're not in Wetlands jurisdiction. I want to hear from Evan what his, just, it could be no comment. We don't have a comment from Evan.
All you're looking for from us is the okay for repurposing the second floor of an existing mixed-use building?
Correct.
For the purpose that you have set out to make.
Correct. Yeah, the, this board, based on our special permit, this board has to grant us the ability to reallocate square footage and reallocate residential units.
And if we believe that we have the authority to do that, we can say yes. And then in order for you to do what you propose to do, you go through the usual building process with building, reviewing things, Board of Health reviewing if they have to review it, and ultimately fire department, a police, whatever has to be done then is after us. You just want to repurpose the use right now.
Correct.
I don't have a problem with that.
And that all goes through David?
Yes.
This is the original special permit.
Number five, general location of the buildings and other improvements shown on the master plan for Mashpee Commons shall not be changed without the consent of Mashpee's appeals.
Right.
Not the town planner or the planning board?
I understand he doesn't approve it.
Right.
I'm looking for feedback from him. That's all.
I agree. Just like we get one from Drew and we...
I totally understand. And I've got nothing, I don't have any issues with it, other than 19 years, nobody's ever commented.
It's not fun being the guinea pig sometimes.
Would you have an issue coming back in two weeks?
I just don't, I don't understand why a continuance would be required.
I don't think it is required, but I have concerns that, again, I've never seen something like this come in front of the board in all these years. And I have no idea...
So the...
What the town planner might think of this.
So this board is being asked to give us the ability to repurpose the second floor. If it's conditioned that the town planner has to opine, couldn't that be done during the building permit process? And if the town planner ultimately decides that he doesn't allow it, then, then David doesn't issue a building permit?
Town planner can't approve or disapprove it. That's up to us.
Yes.
Correct.
I just want to hear his opinion. I mean, I, I know it's not a college dorm, but I personally, if it was a college dorm, I wouldn't want a college dorm in Mashpee Commons because you, you get all these young people and they're hungry, you know?
Well, they're not college students.
Yeah, I know. That's what I'm saying.
These are, these are, these are folks that are, that are through, this is, this is their post-medical school, hands-on practicum. So they're not, they're not 21-year-old kids that are...
No, I get that. No, I get that.
So, I mean, it's, it's professionals. It's, in one instance, we're preparing for, for a family to be there and...
All right, what happens if we do what you suggest and we approve it, condition with the town planner liking it? What happens if he doesn't have positive comments? What do we do?
We have the final say.
Then David doesn't issue a building permit?
It's conditioned. I'm not sure what, what his comments would be that would be, I'm trying to put myself in his shoes. Maybe I shouldn't.
I don't know what he'd say.
I mean, but there is a clear need for housing.
Yes, I agree with you.
Absolute, 100%.
I think we all agree on that.
Yes.
All right, so, and they have the ability or the, the right to repurpose the property to, to meet the needs of, or changing conditions in the, in the marketplace.
It's not an apartment building.
Right.
It's not a single-family.
No.
It's not a two-family.
No.
That's why I'm concerned. That's why I want to know what he has to say.
Well, the only other aspect that would be different is the folks who are there would be there for specific periods of time while they complete their portion of their clinical work.
Correct.
Don't get me wrong, I think it's a good idea.
And then they'd, they'd move on and someone else would move in and take their place.
Correct.
I do too, and I think we could approve this, conditioned on town planner input to David Morris. And if town planner's input to David Morris is, this is not a good idea, it has to come back.
Okay. I would be fine with that.
Okay.
I'm with that. As long as it comes back if Evan has negative comments.
It's going to be positive.
Yeah, 100% positive.
You'll give us the feedback from David, I mean, from Evan?
So that's going to be part of the condition.
All right, let me see if I can get...
So we want something in writing from Evan.
Okay. Conditioned on town planner review and input to the...
100% positive.
Building commissioner.
To building commissioner.
Yeah.
Just leave it like that.
As I said, 100, as Sharon said, 100% positive comments on it.
Yeah.
Full agreement, I guess.
You know, if he's got, if he's got an issue with something, you got to come back.
Okay.
Okay.
If there's no issues, you don't, you don't have to move forward.
Does that work?
It works with me.
Yeah. I think that's perfect.
Okay, do we need to read anything in?
I read them in when I did the Board of Health.
Anybody in the audience have any questions, comments?
Yeah, we got some.
Come right up. If you would, your name and address. You can have three minutes.
I actually learned about this plan from being on the Human Services Committee. I think it is a really good use of this space. Certainly it fulfills a need. I just would want to be assured that this doesn't set a precedent for any other building within Mashpee Commons because there's room to go up and, for whatever reasons it is. Because I think this is a really good, good use, I hope. You know, I, I hope people enjoy living there, but I just want to make sure we're not setting a precedent for other buildings. And just as a comment, we're really hoping that Mashpee Commons starts building the other residences that they've said they're going to build. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments? Okay, seeing none?
Can I just, so Lynn, I'd like to thank you for the positive comments. One thing I would like to say that if this board ultimately decides that this is okay and if Evan responds that this is okay, I actually hope that it, that it does set a precedent, that we do continue to look for ways to repurpose buildings that are underutilized to figure out if there's ways to incorporate residential and housing into those spaces. Not necessarily to go up, but if it's, if it's an office space that's not being used, why not continue to look at that as an opportunity?
But come back to the board?
Yeah, I mean, anything, anything, yeah. Yeah, 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 yeah.
Of course.
Yeah.
Could I, could I ask a question too? Should we, in whatever the terminology of the motion is, indicate that I think the consensus of what I've heard tonight is that all of the members of the board who have heard the proposal are in favor of the proposition that has been put forth by Mashpee Commons, but all they desire is input from the town planner given to the building commissioner?
To the building commissioner.
So I think it's important that we indicate to Evan that all of us are in favor of it, rather than just leave it that he doesn't know what, what, what way we're thinking.
I appreciate that. Some context is, is helpful sometimes.
I, I agree.
Good.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Sharon, you brought up something about, or was it, I'm not sure who it was, if it does not continue to be the Community Health Center...
Right, yes.
Conditioned on that.
It's got to come back. You, you can't just, I don't want another tenant to put housing in there.
Right. All of a sudden... You don't know what's going on.
Yeah.
So if it changes from Community Health Center of Cape Cod, you have to come back here.
Yes.
Okay.
Say, yeah, pop, New Seabury wanted to put this down.
Electrician, something, whatever.
But if Community Health Center ends its use of the building...
Say, I'm sorry, say that again?
If the Community Health Center ends its use of the building, then any further use of the property needs to return to the zoning board of appeals.
Any new tenants. Yeah, any new tenants. So like you can't just, housing, new housing.
Correct.
Right. Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, we need a motion to close public comment.
I'd like to make a motion to close public comment.
Second.
Okay, George seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Anything else before we entertain a motion?
Yeah, I can, I can try.
Charlie, would you make a motion?
I'll try.
Give it a shot.
And please don't hesitate. Don't jump ahead. All right, to make a motion relative to 38 Nathan Ellis Highway, petitioner Mashpee Commons Limited Partnership requests a modification to an existing special permit, SP 8604024, to allow for repurposing the second floor of an existing mixed-use building on property located in the C1 zoning district, map 74 parcel 20 Mashpee, Mass. with the following conditions. Motion number one. The board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of the special permit under Mass General Laws 48, section nine. And with discussion this evening, members of the board voting on this are unanimously in favor of this purpose in the use of the building. I guess. Number two, proposed floor plan, building 31 at 46 Market Street, Mashpee, Mass., prepared by M.A. Keller Moore Architects, project number 22221, drawn by PC, comma, CM, comma, MS, comma, issued date July 11th, 2023, proposed first floor plan, proposed second floor plan. Three, Mashpee Commons parking demand sheet, special permit area dated 7/7/23. Condition on all town department comments read into the record. The board finds that the repurposing of the second floor of an existing mixed-use building is an allowed use under the existing special permit, SP 8604024. If Community Health Center ends its proposed use of the building, any further use of, of the property must return to the zoning board of appeals for its review and approval.
Can we just clarify to say the building, not the property?
The building. If Community Health Center ends its use of the building...
Yeah.
Then any further use must return to the zoning board of appeals for its review and approval. And also conditioned on town planner review and input by town planner to the building commissioner with his report to the zoning board of appeals.
With positive comments.
How about with any comments?
If it's negative comments.
We only want them to come back if it's negative.
Let me strike that back. Condition on, on town planner review and input to the building commissioner...
With 100%...
With positive comments.
Positive comments.
100% backing of the project.
I mean, yes.
100%.
That'll work.
Yeah. Okay. I think I covered it all.
Yep.
We missing anything?
I don't think so.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
George seconds. All in favor?
Yes.
Good luck.
Thank you.
I like the project.
Good luck.
It's a good project.
I've never seen it before. I like it.
Very smart project.
It's innovative.
It is.
Keep reading.
It is.
I don't know what he's reading. Did I want it answered?
Oh, boy.
I don't know if anybody read the, if anybody read the Globe this morning.
Job postings.
Job postings.
Reserve some parking spaces.
We won't have fire department, we won't have police department, unless you made sure that...
Yeah. Well, I mean, it's absolutely...
That's...
It's going to work.
It's a very creative solution.
Find a job?
I came right in as soon as I was called.
Thank you, Bill. Today's date is 12? There you go. That goes to her.
Thank you. I don't know what that's there for.
Bill will be back in a second. Why don't we wait for him? Is that anymore? Who's just concerned that it's back?
I think Evan would like it.
I think he'd like it, but I don't know.
This is most, I've been in, in conflict since I've been in this board. Two times in one night, can I say?
I wouldn't cause a conflict at home.
We had to wait for Bill.
I could have stayed out there after that round. You know what I'm saying?
Just waiting for Bill to get back.
They had an article in the, in the Globe this morning about the fire departments and the police departments on the Cape and on the islands, not just the islands, and how many of those that were living in the top part of the Cape... of those that were living in the top part of the Cape, now the cubs and the firemen are coming from off Cape to come to work. And so they're driving for an hour to get to their job, where they all used to live in the towns that they serviced. So something's going to have to happen, make sure that they have a place to live.
Yep.
Right?
Yes, so what do you want now?
So we're going to do that.
I don't whether who votes, I don't really care.
All right, we're back up and running here. So other business, 44 Pompaneson Island Road, sitting on this one will be three regular board members, Bob and Sharon. Counselor?
44 Pompaneson Island Road, board to vote whether the proposed changes to the site and building plans is a minor or major modification, and it is, and if it requires a regular scheduled hearing under 174-24C9A for the issued special permit SP 2022-35.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, again, for the record Attorney Christopher Corain, representing Adam Decter, the owner of property at 44 Pompaneson Island Road. This was a raise and replace that was approved by this board in either October or November of last year. One of the outstanding matters for this project was a FEMA approval, and FEMA came back and required the basement of this property to be removed. So there is only going to be a crawl space as part of this project. So that was the biggest thing from FEMA. No, it was originally proposed as a full basement, we now have to get rid of the basement, it'll be a crawl space. Given the crawl space, there is a, there's a couple of changes to the plans from what was previously approved. The garage that was going to be attached to the single-family dwelling is now being proposed to be detached. And I gave, there's an email that I provided, it kind of gives you a quick synopsis of what the issues are. Really only two of them, I feel, relate to the zoning issues. One is the detached garage, because it is slightly shifting two feet closer to the road, going from 51 feet to 49 feet. However, it was a conforming condition before, it was a conforming condition as approved, it will continue to be a conforming condition even with the modification, because 40 feet is your bylaw, 49 feet is what we're proposing. The other, with the, with removing the detachment of the garage, we're also reducing the lot coverage from what was approved by this board. So this board approved lot coverage of 19.9%. With these changes to the plan, the lot coverage will go down to 19.1%. So there's a reduction of lot coverage. The original house was completely conforming, the new structure will be completely conforming, it will continue to be conforming, and as approved by this board was conforming. So we just had to come before this board because it's within 50 feet of a wetland. So that's why it became before this board originally, and that's why we're back seeking the modification. Again, a lot of the other changes that we're making, you know, the garage is going to become a single story with an unfinished, where it was proposed to be finished, the unfinished basement, we're removing an exterior stair, moving an interior, you know, there's another stair that's being created. But otherwise, as I say, I think really from a zoning perspective, the two biggest things are the shifting of the garage, the detached garage. But again, it's going to be conforming, 49 feet, and the lot coverage is going down. So I'm hoping that this board can approve this as an administrative modification. As I said, the rest of them are really architectural and interior.
Have you, I know the answer, I think, have you created any non-conformity?
No. Nope.
Is this lot in compliance with the remand in reference to lot coverage? Language?
No, this is, this plan that was approved in November doesn't have, doesn't include that language, so if the board would want us to update it per Cape and Islands, then we can...
I think it's imperative we do.
That's fine.
I mean, we've got, we've gotten guidance, we have to do that.
But as I say...
So if we were to, and you're not an engineer, I know that, at least I, I think that...
Right.
Is any of this lot in floodplain, wetlands, et cetera, et cetera?
I believe it is, only because we had to go through FEMA.
Yeah, so I'm, yeah, I just, so you, is all of it? So is it got to be 100% to 100%, you think?
Probably.
Probably, yes. But again, what was approved by this board was 19%, which is under the 20%.
No, I understand that, I think it's imperative if this board goes with the modification, whether it be major or minor, I think it's imperative that the plans depict what's correct.
Yes, and we can certainly submit the, in order to get a building permit, we can revise the plans if needed.
I think minimally, I'm not saying whether it's major or minor, I think we need to condition it, if we choose to have a vote tonight, that it will be conditioned similar to the other application that we heard, that's going to be in writing...
Yes.
Whether it's going to change the depiction or not, and if it's changed, it is changed prior to a building permit.
Absolutely, that's fine.
So Charlie's not on at this time.
Yeah? What did you make?
Hi.
Let's, yeah.
Yeah, so, no problem. What I'd like to do, is there anything new in the folder, any letters, any comments from the butters?
Anything at all that we didn't elaborate?
No.
No.
So everything that was read in at the original hearing has, has not been amended by any other documentation?
Wait, I have something from Conservation.
Yep.
Project was approved by Conservation, was ordered, order of conditions in E2922.
Counselor, are you aware of any other changes other than what you've depicted?
No.
From whether it be area situation, law, butters, anything of that nature?
No, no, there was no butter objections at the, at the original hearing, there's been nothing, you know, so far, as I said, I specifically asked the architect to give me an easy synopsis of the changes, and as I said, a lot of them, you know, have nothing to do with the outside of the house, it's, you know, unfinished attics, you know, the unfinished basement, so, other than the detached garage with the lot coverage and the front yard setback, which again is still conforming, there's really nothing else.
David, what's your, what's your opinion of this, please?
As, as to whether it's a major or minor? Is that what you mean?
Exactly, right.
I believe...
And if you see any other issues embedded in it?
I do not see any other issues, I think the board can, can push this to as a minor.
Okay.
I think the issue was the basement, and I think, I think when we, when we did this, we did this hearing at the, at the library, if you remember, and I told them that I believe that the basement would not be allowed, I would probably deny the permit.
Yeah.
And they said they get a letter from FEMA, if they get FEMA to allow that basement to happen, but they didn't get it.
Does anybody in this room remember if there were any butters at that point in time, attending that hearing?
My recollection was no butters.
I think there were.
There were no butters.
Yeah, that was my recollection.
No, I just remember it was a long meeting.
Very long.
Yeah, I think... Why don't I go around the board? Billy, what would you like?
If we can, if we approve this as a board, as a minor modification, can we condition that on Cape and Islands providing new plans with the old, with the new rules?
Would be, in my opinion, yes.
I don't see why you couldn't.
And the applicant agrees. So that being said...
These are the old ones.
Yeah, just to read them off.
Because under the old rules, he's decreasing lot coverage.
Right. Yes.
But under the new rules, he might be going to 100 to 100.
What I'd like to do is hear from the board, go to the audience, and then we'll have another conversation.
The lot coverage, the lot coverage, no matter what, wouldn't be going up, because I'm decreasing this...
Correct.
The amount of structure covering this lot is going, going down, so...
I, I understand, but we still need that.
No, no, I agree 100%, yes. No, I agree with that.
Anyone else from the board have any comments in reference to this? Like to hear from the audience. Anyone in the audience would like to speak about this? Okay, all right, so the question that comes down to, is it a, is it a minor modification, a major modification, and it could be actually a third one, are we going to allow the modification, period? Right? It could be major, it could be minor, it could be not allowed. There's your three options.
Well, I hope that this board wouldn't say it's not allowed, considering they, it was approved by this...
But it's still an option, I think I need to bring up as the chairman, I think they need to understand that those are the three options.
Based on the presentation by, by Attorney Corain, and based on comments from David, I believe it's a minor modification.
Jonathan, so I need to read what a minor change would be. I think it's imperative.
And what page is it?
So this is page 22 of our zoning bylaw. It reads, A, Minor Changes to the Site Plan of the Permit of Projects Such as Landscaping Signage, Shape Location of Buildings, Architectural Details, Lot Lines or Roadway Facilities, May Be Approved by the Special Permit Granting Authority Under the Terms of the Zoning Bylaw as it appear, as it applied to the grant of the original special permit, Provided That Said Changes Do Not Violate the Terms of Said Zoning Bylaw, The Terms and Conditions of Your Special Permit Decision, Provisions of Subsection 2 Above, and That They Do Not Require Approval Under the Process Described in B or C. So B or C is changes to land area, et cetera, and C is proposed to text of the special permit decision itself. That being said...
The change of foundation...
We're pushing it a little bit here.
Yeah. I would assume no foundation, a foundation is major.
Well, again, it's minor changes to the site plan of the permit such as landscaping, signage, shape, location of buildings, architectural details...
Buildings are actually moved.
Yep, architectural detail, comma, lot lines or roadway facilities.
So I think, you know, as I, you know, said in my letter, I consider that, you know, what we're, we're asking for is, you know, shape, location of buildings, architectural details and landscaping. When you look at B, it talks about increases the square footage of residential or non-residential structures by more than 5%. Well, we're not doing that, we're actually reducing it, and we're not asking for a change in the text of the special permit, so...
I think you're somewhere in between A and B, is my point.
Well, again, we're not, we're not increasing anything by more than 5%, we're reducing it. The, you know, as I say, the fact that we're going from a full basement to a crawl space, you know, I don't know, I consider that an architectural detail.
Well, what I'd like to do is go around the board, what, what's your opinion, Jonathan?
Well, you know what, go to somebody else, because I'm going to read this over a little bit.
Okay. Billy?
I, I agree with Chris.
Attorney Corain.
Sharon?
I'm torn on this one. A basement is a big deal to me.
You know what, I'm going to reach out to the whole board in this one, even if you're not sitting, George.
I think it's a minor modification.
Charlie?
The fact that it's a basement troubles me, it means a little bit more than minor, but maybe not as much as major, so I'm, you know, I, I think it could be either way, depending upon what the flow of orders is. It talks about it on page 22 and 23, the special permit.
Brad, what do you think?
It's nine, nine, A through G.
I'm going to go with minor also.
I have a problem, I think it's a minor.
So you were saying, Jonathan?
Well, it's under special permit, it's page 22, number nine, and it's, it changes A through G, and it's pretty wordy, and it's like a full page.
I know.
Yeah, A through G.
The only other thing I would say is, is that the, going from the full basement to the crawl space with floodwaters, actually, we're creating a better situation for this board. I don't know that it's really a zoning, it's not really a zoning concern that we're going from a, you know, a, you know, a full basement to a crawl space.
The only ever comes, historically, the major item that comes to my mind between major and minor modifications is this follows, the advertising, right?
Correct.
The general population out there, the ability for someone to come in here, see what's going on, whether it be the detachment of the garage, or whatever it may be, so that they can, but give this board input as to their beliefs. That's the only concern, the biggest concern I have, in reference to a major or minor modification.
Right.
I think from the standpoint of planning, I think if you were to come with this application as one person speaking, I would be okay with it, but again, I'm not living right there, there or there.
Well, as I said, there was no objections to the original project, we're making it a, a better situation overall. So, you know, unfortunately, you know, if, if we're going, you know, it's not really the board's problem, but we're not looking, we're looking at hearings in September now.
Yeah.
If this can clear, help clear some of it up, the original proposal, the ones that it is approved would, will be denied by me for a building permit, so they would have to come, start all over and come back. So that would make it a major, I think that I, I was against the, the board voting for that, that night, because, because of that reason, I, because the, as proposed, the basement was not allowed. I told, I mentioned that.
Yes, you did, right, I remember that.
And then they said, they said, well, we don't have a FEMA, FEMA letter, but we will get a FEMA letter within the next week or so...
Which we extended, we extended.
Which never happened.
Yes.
So that's why I think that, I don't think it's a major, I think the basement was in, the only thing in question, and which would, which will be denied.
Right.
If, if it's, if it's proposed with a basement, it will be denied.
Right. So, and again, that basement, I mean, that basement's really, it's a building code issue, and, you know, so that's, David's purview, and he's saying that he's okay with it being a minor modification.
Okay, I'm just looking at the bottom of page 22, number D.
Yep.
A modification under B, and it goes on, and it says shape and location of buildings. We know a building is moving.
Right, but, but more than 10%.
Changing.
By more than 10%. You have to read the whole, the whole paragraph.
Correct. It's moving quite a bit, though, isn't it?
I don't know. It does, does not increase the square footage of residential or non-residential by more than 10%. We're not increasing, we're not increasing anything, we're reducing. So you gotta, it's not, you have to read it in context. So it's not simply that we're moving something, it's that it's increasing by more than 10, 5% or 10%.
So, or increase the land area occupied, so you move the, you move the garage, and it's no longer connected to the house, so you now are, well, technically you're occupying the same square footage, don't you?
Well, actually less square footage, because the covered, the covered area that was detached is gone, it's now open space.
Exactly. It, and it specifically states increased, not a change of, it says an increase to.
Exactly. And we're not increasing anything.
I don't know, at this point in time, I'd like to hear a motion, so the question is who's making the motion?
Who's sitting on it?
I'm sitting on it, I can make it.
So the people sitting on this would be Bob, Sharon, and the three regular members.
I can make a motion, I can try.
Go for it, Sharon. I'd like to hear a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that 44 Pompaneson Island Road...
Oh, yeah, you're right, my mistake. No, I went out to public, did I not go to public comment?
No.
Well, why don't I ask again, if I already asked, would you like to speak? I thought I did go to public comment.
It's from the...
No, didn't I look at you and see if you wanted it?
You did, I didn't have a comment, but my, my neighbor sent a text.
Oh, okay. So I, so I did ask for public comment.
Just introduce yourself.
Oh, sorry, I'm Margie Decter, 44 Pompaneson Island Road, hi, everyone. Should I read my neighbor's type, like, we didn't know that the butter, because it was...
And why don't you give her address?
I think it's 45 Pompaneson Island Road, so this would be directly across the street from us.
Okay, go ahead.
And this is from Lisa Conti, it just says Adam and Margie Decter have shared their plans, and we fully support their project, and wish them lots of happiness in their new home.
That's nice, thank you.
They're very nice neighbors, we have not very nice...
But I did ask for public comment, did I not earlier?
I think you did.
You need to close it.
Yes, I'd like to close public comment.
That's a good one.
That's a motion, right?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Yes.
All right, all right, public comment's closed, so we'd like to, I'd like to have a motion for...
I'd like to make a motion that we accept 44 Pompaneson Islands Road request for a minor modification on special per, that we're, under Article 174-24C9A, on the special permit SP 2022-35, that we accept this.
So for clarity, you're stating in your motion that it is a minor modification, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay, do I have a second to that motion?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so everybody sitting on this hearing approved.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and you did a great job for your first chair meeting.
Well, I'm not so sure, I, I, I thought I went up to the audience, and I didn't go to the audience, but that's okay.
I'd like to make a motion...
Yeah, it's all right.
Because it wasn't my comment.
It worked out for me.
So, well, thank you very much, have a great night.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes... I'd like to make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes of June twen, June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three, and the meeting minutes dated June twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three.
Do I have a second on that motion?
You have a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next thing on the agenda. Order review candidates for appointment by the board, select board to serve as a full voting member of zoning board of appeals. Interviews will be held for candidates in alphabetical order by their last names.
Chairman, I have to leave.
Hey, would you like to?
Would you, would you like to be appointed to be a, would you like to be considered?
Oh, sure.
Okay.
I don't know. I gotta be interviewed, right?
Well, so.
I don't sit there.
You know what, Sharon, if it's okay with you, because he needs to leave, could he speak first, and then you can speak next?
Alphabetical order.
Well, there you go. Thank you very much.
Do you have questions?
Uh, we will, and he's gonna.
Do you have the list of questions? Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We feel the opportunity to present myself as a, as a, a, a potential member, as opposed to an acting member, uh, on the board of appeals, a board, zoning board of appeals.
So George, if you were appointed to a full membership, how do you think you could add to the board, uh, as far as its operation, input, et cetera?
Well, I think I continue to have the input I've had in the past. Um, I think I'd be here. I, I live in Mashpee. I don't live anywhere else. So I would be in attendance, uh, in most, as many meetings as possible. And I would continue to learn from you and from the others, uh, as to how I could improve, uh, my knowledge of the zoning, zoning information as it relates to the town.
Is it your hopes that you're gonna remain on the board for an extended period of time?
I'd like to stay on the board, yes.
Which we would like to see you remain on the board. That's great. As one member, I can say that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you know when you started as an alternate?
Uh, that's a good question. At least, I think it's been at least three years since I've been an alternate. Possibly four.
Well, I know everybody has done a wonderful job here, so.
No question about that. Anybody else on this board like to ask George any questions?
No.
Now's your time.
I've sat beside him, you know, for the time that I've been on the board. I enjoy his company and his expertise.
There you go.
Yep.
Anyone else?
Not a question, but I, my input would be, it, it would be wonderful to have him as a board member.
Okay. All right. I thank you very much, George.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, thank you.
You are welcome. Thank you for your time and effort up till today. And hopefully he'll continue being that, and then you.
Appreciate that.
Sharon? There you go.
Take care, George. Other any others?
Go ahead, Sharon. Tell us why you think, why, why you should be on this board as a full-time member.
I have been an associate member of the board since fall of two thousand seventeen. I enjoy volunteering, cheering and working with the community. I also volunteer with my neighborhood on the beach association. And I have a degree which qualifies me to be a city planner.
Very nice. So how do you envision improving this board's abilities, knowledge, and operations? How can you help us?
How can I help you? I can bring in my knowledge of site location. I have some knowledge of G I, G I S and demographics. I've never been a planner, but I did work with G I S and demographics and site location in the past, years ago. And I have ten years of experience in the, um, demographics and stuff. I also have a father who was a former Z B A member in his community, and a daughter that's a city planner.
And, and, and is my addition correct? You've been an associate for six years?
Yes.
Lot of experience.
Yeah, a lot of experience. Any other members? Sorry, Jonathan, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to say that, uh, she does a lot of reading for the board, and, uh, she's very active and, uh, takes an active role in questions, et cetera. Has everybody. Has been a great board member.
You envision yourself having the ability to make intricate motions?
I tried today.
At least making an attempt to do that.
Yes, I would attempt to do that, yes.
I assume you plan to stay on the board?
Yes, I would stay regardless anyway. I enjoy coming here.
Yep. Anyone else on the board have any comments, questions?
I just enjoy having been with Sharon and all that she's done and, and her great attitude, you know, with all that she brings to this board, so.
I enjoy moving down the table now, now.
You haven't asked her if she enjoys sitting next to you. That's the question. I've done that for you.
That's a later question.
Where are we moving, Scott?
So anyone else? So thank you, Sharon, very much. Anyone else have any questions before she leaves?
No.
Okay. Anyone else on this board would like to be considered, uh, a full-time member?
I'm happy where I am.
Brad?
I wouldn't mind being a full-time member.
So why don't you sit in that chair right there, Bob?
I get the least amount of experience. Quite all right?
Yeah.
Okay.
So tell us how you feel you can improve upon this board, help this board, and make us a better board.
How I could help is, uh, like you said, learn, and, uh, I've had my own business. I think it seems like there's a lot of common sense here, uh, also with rules and regulations. But, um, I think that, uh, I, I'd like to look at both sides when people come to, in front of us. Not just totally by, you know, I, it's like a little bit of a human type of thing that I take into consideration. About us, so on, so on. And, uh, and I enjoy coming here. And, and, and it's, it's something that I, I'm interested in. I like to learn.
So you hopefully intend being on the board for a long period of time?
Yep. I live in Mashpee. I'm up to my, my years in building, so I'm not going nowhere.
I like questions from board members, please?
How long have you been with us now, Bob?
Maybe, maybe a year.
A year. Okay. Good, good. We hope they have you here for a long, long period.
Thank you.
Any other members' questions?
No, no questions.
No, I just say he's done an excellent job, filling in when we need him.
Right.
Got a good crew.
Very attentive.
Okay, thank you, Bob.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else like to go sit in that chair and, uh, and give us a speech? Come on. No?
Oh, me?
Do you have an interest in me here?
Sure.
I've enjoyed my time with all of you. Uh, I've learned a lot about zoning. I'm a lawyer, which doesn't mean that I know anything about zoning, but, uh, I have learned by watching all of you act together, for the common good, hopefully, of our town, which needs all the help that it can get. I guess my, my criteria is if two people own property side by side, both of those people have rights. And sometimes those rights interfere with each other. And one is not happy with what the other is doing. And ultimately, if they can't take care of it themselves, it has to come before us as the zoning board of appeals. And then what we have to do is we have to impartially apply the regulations of the, of zoning, of the town of Mashpee, to make sure that those people are dealt with fairly. Doesn't mean that we can make everybody happy.
No.
And it doesn't mean that we can correct all of the things that are wrong with our town. But our job is, in that little book, our rules and regulations that we have to comply with. And we have to be fair, and we have to give people the right to say what they want to say, to show us what they want to show us, and then for us to decide things fairly. That's, that's what we've all been doing for all the time that I've been here, and that's what I've enjoyed about all of you. And I'd obviously like to continue, whether I'm an associate member or full member, really doesn't make any difference, because I'll be here as long as I can be here.
Well, you've added a lot to the board. You have a lot of expertise in figuring out some of the lawyerly type of questions. You've been a great help.
It's been fun.
Do you envision yourself growing from a standpoint of knowledge of zoning from a legal standpoint?
The two years I've been here, I've, I've, I started off knowing nothing about zoning, because I, I didn't have anything to do with it. And watching all of you, the way that you act and what's in the book, I don't know what's in all the things in the book, uh, but I'm learning about zoning and, and what's involved. You know, with Dave's help, with Mary Ann's help, and everybody else's help, so. So I'm cool. However I can serve, I'd love to serve.
Anyone else on the board like to ask any questions?
We love having you here.
You do a very good job.
You're making the decision off the top. You know?
They all are.
Oh, my God.
Well, the, the other aspect is that, once I found out the amount of pension that we have after serving.
Who could ever walk away from that? Thank you very much.
It's been fun.
The only one other person that has a seventy.
Brad?
I asked Brad, and he kept looking at us like he.
Up to you, Brad.
I was originally appointed to this board in the fall of twenty fifteen.
Wow.
And I, I took a year off in twenty nineteen, actually, two years, and I was reappointed in twenty twenty-one. Uh, I enjoy listening to everything. I'm a not, a knowledgeable person on building. I can read the zoning bylaws, and, uh, I don't know, although I've been a great help to this board, but I do what I can.
Well, you're here all the time.
Been here forever.
Comments are good.
Yes, you've been a help to this board without a doubt.
Absolutely.
Sure.
Doubt about it.
So how do you envision yourself growing with the board and helping the board in the future?
I would like to be a full member, to, uh, vote on projects all the time. And I feel that I could possibly, uh, be an officer if needed, although I don't have the experience or knowledge to be chairman or vice-chairman.
Understood. Anybody from this board have any other questions?
I want to thank you for everything you've done over the years.
Yep.
Thank you, Brad. Okay, so it seemed to me the next thing we need to do as a board is to put together our recommendation, and I'll read it, the zoning board, uh, committee members will hold a discussion.
Privately run, or is it, you said the candidates out, or?
Uh, you know what? Why don't I just read this and we'll make the decision? So the zoning board committee members will hold a discussion, the candidate interviews, and their preference for the committee recommendations to the select board.
Somebody's waving in the background.
You can't send the candidates out.
Okay. The zoning board committee will vote on the recommendation to be made to the select board. As the select, as the chairman, it is a tough decision for me, and I'll tell you why. When I took this position, I was very concerned about motions, et cetera. I think Sharon has got a good ability to either make them or learn to make them. Charlie has a very good ability to make them now, and, and the ability to learn to make them even better, uh, in my opinion. I think that George, everybody that's sat at that table has their pluses, right?
Yep.
And as chairman, I'm being very selfish in looking at the very big hole that I believe we have. And I'm not patting myself on the shoulder, but making motions can be very problematic, especially the way that this board throws comments at the person making those motions and then says, make a motion. And it's not easy, I can tell you. And you gotta be at the top of your game, and, and it's not easy. It's, it's, it can be very trying at times. And again, I think, I think you could learn that.
Yes.
You're not there quite yet. I think Charlie's probably there, but, um, I'm torn, and so that's where I'm at. What's your thoughts?
I tend to agree with you. I think the, uh, Sharon has been here, well, the longest continually, has a good knowledge of everything, as well as everybody on the board. I think anybody on this board is qualified to sit in that fifth seat.
I concur on it, sir.
Absolutely. So it comes down to probably experience and knowledge, and I think, I, I agree with you, Sharon and Charlie. And the two hardest things, as you said, are making the motions and understanding what's in this book.
Yeah. I mean, as.
This all comes with experience.
Yeah.
This, it takes forever to learn to be a zoning board member. There is so much to learn, especially if you're not a builder. You come in here, you don't know anything about building. It's tough. Lot, lot, lot to learn.
Yeah, and again, being tried, I mean, one of the things that was concerning the heck out of me when I took this position, being the chairman, chairman now, was that hole that we needed to fill, right? Because it is, it is so hard to decide at times, because this board just throws a match, and, you know, it's not easy. And, and I think, Bob, you've got, you bring a lot to the table, and that is your ability of knowledge of business, et cetera, which, you know, the people that come in front of this board, in their own little way, they have, many businesses come in front of this board, and they have their concerns and issues that we need to look at. We need to consider that along with, you know, our community. So everybody here has got their, their thing, right? Even, even George, even, even Brad. So tough call. But we've got to make the call tonight, ladies and gentlemen, because we've got to, we've got to get this board full again, and we are lacking in that.
Can, can I, can I speak?
Surely. This is a, this is a free comment period.
Sharon has had much more experience on the board than I have. I'm a lawyer, so part of my training has been to, to do things like, you know, make motions, to, to do stuff that, that all of you haven't really done. I'm gonna be here, and that doesn't mean that I'm not gonna be able to help relative to motions and all of that stuff. So the issue of motions to me i- is basically a non-issue, because we're all here to help whoever it is who's making the motion. I think Sharon, by virtue of the years that she's served here, deserves to be on it, much more so than I. I absolutely and unequivocally intend to stay on the board if I can, whether I'm an associate member, a full member, whatever. And I'll help in any way that I can, you know, relative to any issue that needs to be done relative to motions. So, you know, if, if that's the problem, it's a solvable problem.
It's a great point. It, it just stopped falling down, okay?
Yeah. What did you just say? I'm sorry?
Stop falling.
Just stop falling down.
And I am willing to learn motions. When I originally applied, I didn't know you were gonna become Sharon.
I had no intentions of becoming Sharon.
But I am willing to learn motions, and I think with Charlie's help and with your help, Scott's gonna be here too. Scott's made motions.
We're all working together, right?
Yeah. It's a team effort.
I, I think it would, it would be wrong for me to not bring up something that is, that I'm concerned about as this, as the chairman, because, um, I'm learning, as you saw tonight, there's things, you know, but for me, it's easier, because if I make a mistake or I don't do something, the board, hey, wait! And that's easy for me, right? Because then I just do it, right? Chair, you know, making a motion, just that one word left out, or the one word added, changes a lot of things. And I, when I used to make motions, I didn't always follow that motion form. Matter of fact, most of the time I didn't. And it's not.
Way back when, before Mary Ann made the motion sheets.
Well, exactly. We started back then when there wasn't motion sheets.
No kidding?
Yeah. So my point is this. Yeah, I mean, it's.
Yeah, I can add to motions as we're going. I, I like the fact that Mary Ann gives the base, but like the fact that we added.
Oh, yeah, we always add.
Yeah, that we add. I can add the odds and ends.
Yep.
And Scott, you never see. And Scott, you never see Scott do motions. Scott does very good motions.
Yeah, he does.
Yeah.
In my opinion, as an, as the junior alternate, I think it's only fair that, you know, Sharon gets the position because she has put more time in. And, well, one thing, to get more experience, I mean, it's, to sit here and learn is one thing too. But I wish there was a little bit more participation for the alternates as far as maybe reading and things like that, so we should get more involved.
Well, you know what my attitude is, Chair, and I think Jonathan shared this before even me, and that's the following. When we have, when we're in the middle of a conversation in reference to an application, everybody in this board has a right to chime in at any time.
Yes, and we encourage it.
We, we certainly because we want to hear, you know, we don't know it all. We want to hear from everybody from this board, questions, answers, and what have you. But my only concern is, is, you know, there's criteria that we need to follow. We're in the middle of something, whether it be making a motion. Someone who's not a board member, I'm not so sure would have a right to say, "May I amend your motion?" If you're not a board member, if you're not, if you're not a sitting member for that, for that, I don't, so we have to follow those issues.
I don't, I, as far as motions, Ron, I agree, you know.
I
No, I do not have Charlie's, I, I can't.
I would love to come up with a program where we could get a rotation out of the associates that works for everybody. Jonathan and I tonight were going, "All right, I left the room. Who did you have sit on this one? I had this." And he's writing it down. I'm trying to figure out who's going to sit next.
Right.
We want everybody to rotate so it's fair, so we hear from all you, and you're involved.
So you can get involved.
But it's a problem because it's Sharon and Bob, and then all of a sudden it's George and Charlie. Well, George is one of them. It's not easy to do, and some nights you're going to be in a scenario where maybe you don't even get to sit, and he sits three times. And it's not because we wanted to, it's because it worked out that way.
If, if an associate, if the associate members participate, as we do, but if, when it comes to the point where a motion is to be made, an associate member who has sat on that matter before the board is capable of making the motion.
Correct.
All I might suggest is that you can spread that around a little bit.
Yeah, well
So that people aren't burdened with having to do it all the time. But we can look at what's before us to determine, well, is this really complicated? Is this something that's an easy thing to put together?
Like, I don't need to read everything.
No.
But that's, that's something that an alternate could
Well, another thing I noticed tonight, another thing I noticed tonight, which will help in the decision-making process, so I'm sitting here as the chair, and I'm trying to review a plan. At the same time, I'm trying to think what my next move is to, and I need to review a plan that's in front of us, right? And I don't have Scott here to review a plan, so I'm trying to look at a plan, and I'm yet still trying to think what the next step is in reference to what I have to do next as a chairman.
Well, I will be telling you, Scott has been training me on plans.
Well, I haven't had a chance to comment.
Okay, comment.
I am thrilled that we have the alternates that we do have. I mean, we're very, very lucky to have the people that we have working with us. And we couldn't be more fortunate. I chime in with a couple of comments, both from Bob and from Charlie. I think it's Sharon's time to be elevated to a full, full board member.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
I'll second. So we have a motion on the table for Sharon to be presented to the selectmen as our appointed, our requested next person to sit on this board.
May I help you with this process, please? I've been through it twice.
No, ma'am, no, I'm, I'm sorry. This is amongst the board.
No, I'm just saying, process. The select board is going to ask you to send
A recommendation.
Which we're going to do, we're going to vote on it first.
For everybody.
We're all saying
We don't.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure you, because I've been through this twice.
Yeah, the whole board's going to, everybody sitting at this table is going to vote on this. So I have a motion that Sharon is that person, and I have a second by billing. I'm going to do a road call, roll, roll call. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Sharon, aye.
Obstand.
Aye. Yes, aye.
So the motion is almost unanimous because Sharon abstained.
Correct.
Okay, so our recommendation going to the board of selectmen will be as follows. Three, five, and six members of this board voted to present Sharon as our next full-time member. Sharon abstained, and Scott Goldstein was not present, and George was not present.
Correct. And we highly recommend Sharon.
Let, let this lady speak, because there is more to this. Come right up if you will.
Go right ahead.
I, I'm busy. I just want to be helpful, because I've been through this with two different committees. The last one was the CPC where this created the ruckus. The select board has said
Who, who are you?
Lynn Barbie is my name. The select board, according to policy 001, any candidate that, for a position, the committee is asked to provide a either strongly recommend, recommend, recommend with hesitation, or not recommend for each candidate. And then the select board will take whatever you all say and consider it. That's what they've said to us. That's what John Cotton was saying at the last select board meeting. Each candidate, they want to know from each candidate that comes before the committee, is it, and, because the policy, as everyone says, strongly recommend, recommend, recommend with hesitation, or not recommend.
Okay.
So each person has that.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
Who votes? The three board members?
The, anyone on the
Because the rest of them are associate
As far as I know, anybody who's on the committee.
Yeah, that's why they use committee and not board, I think, language.
It's anybody on the committee.
We're going to use everybody in this room.
Yeah.
I think that's
Anybody on the, well, yeah, it's anybody on the committee.
I make, I would like to hear a motion that states the follow
Candidate has to have their own designation. I'm just trying to be helpful because it's created this crisis.
Thank you.
I would like to make, hear a motion that states that Sharon will be strongly recommended by this board. Can I get a motion?
Each individual person has to
We have to do the same thing for everyone.
Exactly.
I, I strongly recommend.
Okay, I strongly recommend.
I strongly. I strongly recommend.
Strongly recommend.
Strongly.
I didn't have to do it for everybody else.
Yes.
So then, I have a question. Uh, so is it the statement of, what is our opinion of Charlie Reddy's?
Recommend.
You recommend. I recommend.
I recommend.
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 Recommend. Okay. George is not here, but we still have to vote on George. George, Ganzelman?
Recommend.
I'll recommend.
Recommend?
Recommend.
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 Okay. Bob Kangeeill?
Recommend.
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 Brad.
Yeah, Brad?
Recommend.
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 Yeah. So summary is as follows.
Have we done it all right now?
I think, I think you got it there.
To summarize, as follows, Robert, Brad, Charlie, um, let's see, and George, were all recommended by this board. Strongly recommended by this board member was Sharon.
Thank you.
How's that? That's the
Thank you for your help.
I think Sharon Cotton will be very happy.
Thank you.
I think a conversation has to be had with Mr., with Chairman Cotton, because I don't understand that old Ross.
That was very helpful.
Thank you.
Just trying to be helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
So that's done.
Yes. So
We missed the minutes. We have to approve.
No, we did the minutes.
We did that. I did that. I jammed at it before.
Yes. So would someone like to make the biggest motion of the day?
I so moved that we adjourn until the next
I'll second.
Say a second. All of the favor.
Aye. Good night.
Good night, all.
So what is all this paperwork now?
Good work. Goes to the boss.
Boss.
Congratulations, at least so far.
So far.